Call the regular council public hearing meeting to order and have the adoption of minutes for the June 23rd.
I'll move the minutes.
Second. Okay, all in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Council and committee minutes, June 23rd.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move the minutes be adopted for land use, June 23rd.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move minutes be received, financial committee, June 23rd.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
I move the minutes for public hearing, June 23rd.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. Now, just kind of a motion to amend the agenda to bring forward R 127.
Also move.
Second.
Smart Surrey strategy, second, or all in favor, contrary, carried. Okay, so R 127.
I'll move the recommendations.
Second.
Smart Surrey strategy.
Okay, councillor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to take a moment to speak to this because it's a very comprehensive corporate report that we're looking at here with the Smart Surrey strategy. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate staff, particularly Jeff Sampson, who led this, and all the senior management team who worked on it, because this strategy really touches on each and every one of our departments throughout the entire city. And really what it is, is looking at innovation and looking at technology in ways that are going to deliver our services to the city more efficiently and just in a better way. And as well as that, using technology for economic development, for using it for our social engagement, there's really four pillars to this. The first one being social engagement and connectivity, so that goes to our open data strategy and putting up data sets on our website to be available to the public. There's going to be over 300 data sets, just as an example, in our open data strategy alone. And in that as well, being able to provide wireless Wi-Fi in public spaces throughout the city and looking at a strategy to have dark fibre so that we can be a more connected city. And what that's going to mean is better engagement for our community to be able to engage with each other and engage with us. And that's such an important aspect of a city moving forward with a smart city strategy. As well for economic growth, there's a number of different pieces that are specifically geared to looking at economic growth in the city, particularly in our clean tech sector and in Innovation Boulevard, which we've spoken of before. And service delivery, being able to improve our service delivery through, again, the use of open data and apps to be able to deliver our services in a better manner. One of the pieces of this is our new traffic management system that's just coming online now, which is not only going to open up the city as far as intersections and that sort of thing, there's going to be up to 250 cameras when this is fully deployed by the end of the year, providing a much better, real-time traffic management system in the city to keep our commerce and our residents moving around the city. So these are just a few of the pieces that are coming forward in the Smart City Strategy. I'm very excited about it. And again, I want to commend staff on an excellent job as we implement this in the next few months.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for all the work that's been done on this. And I know, as we said, it touches every single department and there's, as we go along, there will be more things added as well. And I know that we're doing a lot with the RCMP, their real-time data, all of those things as well, coming online. So just want to thank staff and your work with all the advisory committees as well. Councillor Villanueva?
I just want to acknowledge the work of councillor Hayne because this is a new area that all cities are dealing with now, the move towards green technology and other kinds of power and wiring. And I think that since you've been a city councillor, you have attended a number of workshops and conferences to really educate yourself on the issue. So on behalf of myself and I'm sure other council members, it's really good to have someone that has some passion behind it and is really knowledgeable to sort of work with our staff and to bring issues and also recommendations back to this council. So thank you for that work, councillor Hayne.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Rusodi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you to councillor Hayne. It is a significant enhancement to a lot of work of a lot of departments and bringing us to the year 2014. So really happy to see the components around the crime mapping and the real time around sort of citizen engagement pieces, but also now the ability for us as councillors to be able to post our expenses online, I think is really important. And all of these recommendations that have come forward have been done very thoughtfully and very responsive to all of the concerns that we've been hearing over the years through all the community associations and business associations. So really happy to see us take this next step and do it in such a, in a positive way.
Okay, thank you. I'll call a question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Okay, moving into the public hearing portion of the meeting, Madam Clerk.
First bylaw, zoning amendment bylaw 18247, the address is 14034 and 14056 58A Avenue. The applicant is 0949866 BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to single-family residential and single-family residential 12 in order to subdivide into 16 lots.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18247? First call, second call, please come forward, state your name and address.
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680 143 Street. Our comment is once again in the context of the concerns about the city's matrix, which is part and parcel of the biodiversity conservation strategy, considerations arising out of the ecosystem management study that was done. And the matrix is everything that's not included in the hubs, the sites and the corridors and the riparian areas of our city. And I note here that of the conifers, 38 out of 50 are going to be taken out. So that's essentially three quarters. The reality is, and increasingly information is providing, that the biodiversity that encompasses each of these individual trees is different as from conifers as they are from deciduous. And they're important that we retain as many as possible.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and...
Good evening, Mayor and council. Hello, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and council. My comp to, I'm the agent for the applicant on this project, hub engineering, 101, 7285 130th Street. With regards to this project, we've gone through an iterative process with city's planning department. In particular, the client has conceded one lot to try and save as many trees as they can, in particular, the trees on the west side and along the south side of the property. So the road alignment was pushed over to the east specifically, so the lots that are on the west side are much larger than the rest of the lots. And again, the intent was to save the predominance of conifers that are situated on the west side of the lot. So in this project here, there's 16 lots, of which I believe it's 16 significant trees are being retained on this project.
Okay.
If there's any questions that I can help assist.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18247? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18245, the address is 18682 Fraser Highway. The applicant is Trademark Property Group Limited. The applicant is seeking to amend the existing comprehensive development bylaw number 14711 in order to allow a private liquor store in the Hillcrest Village shopping centre.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18245? First call, second call, third and final...
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Tracy Chang. I'm a resident at unit 83, 18701 66th Avenue, which is the Encore at Hillcrest complex. Surrey, the future lives here. I cannot agree more with this statement. As per the city of Surrey population facts sheet dated March 15th, 2010, Surrey has a third highest proportion of children birthed to 19 years in the region, comprising 27.3 of its total. Metro Vancouver average is 22.8. Children are the future of Surrey. They will be the future lawmakers, taxpayers and innovators directing the future of our city. Specifically pertaining to the Hillcrest neighbourhood in Cloverdale, the majority of the population is comprised of families with young children. This neighbourhood is made up of a townhouse complex as well as single-family dwellings. On its own, the Encore Townhouse Development located directly south of the proposed liquor store site is comprised of approximately 200 units, an overwhelming majority of which are households with young children that attend Hillcrest Elementary. Hillcrest Elementary is approximately 200 metres from the proposed new liquor site. I would encourage those making the decision on this matter to actually attend the site and walk the path from, and walk the path from the site to Hillcrest Elementary and adjoining Hillcrest Park. Only then can one properly consider the impact to the community and make an informed decision on this matter. It would be apparent that the patrons of Hillcrest Village and residents of the area are mostly families with young children. Under the city of Surrey policy, locational guidelines for private liquor stores as published by the planning and development department, private liquor stores should not be located within one kilometre of another private liquor store or within 400 metres of a school, public children's park, public children's playground, public library or a public recreation centre. Two, where a private liquor store is proposed to be relocated within 400 metres of its current location, the new location for the private liquor store should be no closer to a school, a public children's park, public children's playground, a public library or a public recreation centre than it was with its former location. The proposed site in Hillcrest Village is approximately 200 metres from the Hillcrest Elementary property. This is closer than 400 metres. Further, the liquor store at Clayton Crossing across the Fraser Highway is currently farther from Hillcrest Elementary and Hillcrest Park. Should the liquor store be relocated to Hillcrest Village, it would be closer to the school, public park and children's playground. It would appear that the above document published by the city of Surrey's planning and development was published as a result of properly considering the impact that a liquor store would have on a community when placed in areas frequented by children. There are two recommendations. The proposed site fails to meet either recommendation and as such, the motion should not pass. The city of Surrey corporate report dated September 9th, 2013, on the matter of this application, carelessly dismisses the above recommendations, stating simply that the school board has no objection. My question to the city of Surrey then, is have they asked the right people? Are the persons on the school board residents of the area? All of the parents that I have spoken to who are residents of the area are concerned about and are against liquor store in the proposed new site. How do we improve our city and maintain good neighbourhoods such as Hillcrest? By encouraging growth of new residents and retaining residents who can contribute to the future of our city and who can fill positions in new prospective companies that would be willing to move to Surrey and draw from our pool of qualified workers. In driving these people away and deterring prospective new qualified residents, we run the risk of our community, specifically Hillcrest, falling into a cycle of degradation. As a result, the city will spend needless resources in order to clean up and improve the image of the community once more, as we have seen in so many other areas. We kindly request to be advised who we can subsequently hold accountable in the event that the above negative impact to our community occurs as a result of the decisions made today. In summary, the proposed site at Hillcrest Village contradicts all of the locational guidelines for private liquor stores as published by the city of Surrey's planning and development department. We need good, solid and informed planning in order to ensure the future of Surrey. We need to act responsibly and make every effort to facilitate the development of our children in good, safe neighbourhoods. In consideration of the above, please do not pass the motion to relocate the Clayton Heights Liquor Store to the new proposed site at Hillcrest Village.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Planner, could you put that red ring up for me again, please? And just for clarification, can I find out where the original store is, the Clayton? So it's basically across the street?
It's across the street, across from the Fraser Highway. So it is within the, it's within 200 metres, it's across the street. Do you see 188 and Fraser Highway on that corner there?
Okay. And I just, for other clarification, so it's just a relocation across the street is basically what we're doing, is that correct?
Across the highway, yes, but it's closer than to the elementary school.
And just so that I understand, the school district bylaws, planning, parks, recreation, culture department have no issue with this proposal? Is that correct?
Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, there have been no concerns expressed.
And no concerns expressed by the public as well?
We've had, we have received, Madam Mayor, some letters since the report went to council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18245? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Next bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18246, the address is 17030 Fraser Drive. The applicants are Parmegi, Jaswinder, Jasper, Pavla and Surrender Gill. The applicant is seeking to rezone the northern portion of the property from general agricultural and one acre residential to single-family residential in order to subdivide into six single-family lots. The southern portion of the site will become a remainder A1 lot, which will remain in the ALR. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought in order to reduce the lot width of five of the lots and the lot area requirement for proposed lot seven.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18246? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Next bylaw is heritage revitalisation agreement bylaw 18251, the address is 16488 64th Avenue. The applicant is 0948184 BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to amend the existing heritage revitalisation agreement bylaw 17885 in order to reuse the existing Henry Bowes farmhouse as a single-family dwelling. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the front, rear and side yard setbacks of this development.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18251? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Zoning amendment bylaw 18248, the civic addresses are 2936, 2944, 2946, 2953 and 2964 and 2971 151st Street. The applicant is 0745028 BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from single-family residential and duplex residential to comprehensive development in order to permit the development of 30 townhouse units and 76 apartment units in a four-storey building with underground parking.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18248? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Official community plan text number 132, amendment bylaw 18250, the address is a portion of 10566 Scott Road. The applicant is Angelo Testa. The applicant is seeking to designate the site a temporary commercial use permit area. In addition to, in addition, a temporary use permit is being sought to allow for the operation of a temporary landscape supply business for a period not to exceed three years.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18250? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Next bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18252, the civic address is 10032 120th Street. The applicant is Hansra Shahal. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from single-family residential to single-family residential 12 in order to subdivide into seven single-family small lots.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18252? First call, second call, third and fa... Okay.
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680 143 Street. Once again, it's the issue of the retention of trees, but I find it interesting, and I do appreciate, by the way, the fact that the location of the existing trees was included in the package that I was able to receive, but I'm wondering why there are trees that are extant, that are designated for removal, that are right along the edge of the road and the cul-de-sac.
Madam Planner, do we have that layout that we can have a look at? So you're talking about the ones at the end?
Yeah, I'm wondering if whomever worked on this knows how it is that people use cul-de-sacs in these areas. I happen to live on one like this. And the cul-de-sac is there and the walkway is at the end. And nobody walks on anything remotely resembling a sidewalk. Everybody goes down the middle. They come en famille, up to six people even more, with their dogs, their buggies and all the rest of it. So I'm wondering why the, certainly the ones at the, where the walkway is, why would they have taken out? And for that matter, the why, the one between properties five and six and at the corner of number one.
Okay.
Property number one. I repeat what I said earlier. We are losing incredible amounts of our coniferous trees here in Surrey. And that's got implications for health and wellbeing of all of the citizens as well as the retention of adequate biodiversity.
Okay, thank you.
Not the least of which, of course, is appearance.
Was there any rationale, who wants to, Madam Planner, Mr Engineer, in terms of taking those trees down along that walkway?
Madam Mayor, the applicant may be better able to respond.
Okay. Thanks, Deb. Can you please?
Hi, my name is Dexter Harabi. I'm with Hunter Led Consulting. I'm the agent for the project and I can clarify the issues raised by the delegation here. So those two trees, there is a 4.5 metre walkway, pedestrian walkway proposed in that location. So those trees cannot be saved because of the construction of the walkway and the road. So that's number one. And we actually have taken a very, you know, a thorough analysis of retaining as many trees as possible. The only trees that are being removed are those that are affected by the road and the building envelope. So hopefully that's the answer I want to give to you. If there's any other question.
Well, I don't think that kind of answers it. So if you look, if you look along that, where the, where the walkway is there...
Yes.
Okay, so you're building, you're building the walkway there to connect to the, to the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
So why couldn't they be saved?
Well, it's going to be impacted by the construction of the cul-de-sac. We're talking about those two trees to the east side.
Yeah, no, I know which trees we're talking about.
Is that, those are, we're talking about...
The ones at the end and all the ones on the, on the other side of the street.
Number five and six. So five and six, it'll be impacted by the construction of the road. There's going to be some sort of a sidewalk and all that. So we've tried that to retain it and it's not possible to retain those trees.
And what about the ones on the other side?
On, sorry, which ones?
Right along the edge there.
Same as the north side of the, you know, the property. Those trees are all will be impacted by the construction of the road. We have worked with the neighbours and, you know, it's all agreed that we can, you know, remove those trees. We've also worked with the landscape department and it's all agreed that those cannot be saved.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone further that wishes to speak to bylaw number 18252? First call, se...
Yeah, my name is Borg Andreasen and I live in the cul-de-sac at the end there. One of the concerns I have with all these small lots in there, it's going to be a lot of people, there's going to be a lot of parking. Is there anything incorporated in this thing to take care of parking? I'm in the cul-de-sac and it'd be very easy to park there and walk into it. Is there anything that's rules, parking or decisions or is it just wherever comes?
Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, a requirement of the RF 12 zone is that the, each lot accommodates two parking spaces, but in this case, because of the driveway and the proposed double garages, they will be able to accommodate four parking spaces on each lot. On each of the proposed lots that are shown here.
Okay, so each one will have a double garage and then room to park another car behind it. Correct. Okay.
Is there any kind of rules or regulations as to parking whenever these places get filled up?
Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, I'm assuming the question pertains to on-street parking?
Yes.
So provided that the, you know, the vehicles aren't impacting driveways, they are permitted to park on the street.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Well, it just seemed like seven lots, it's an awful lot of small, lot of small houses and a lot of people coming in there. And I don't think it's really up to snuff for the rest of the district. And I know parking is going to be a problem. I would like, I wouldn't like to see there be something like Clayton Hale out there. So I just wondered if some kind of rules, regulation as to where people will actually park their cars, especially if they have suites on top of it.
Yeah, and so, so the way that it's designed, so it's a double car garage, so there's the two cars there, there'll be another two parking spots on each property, so that'll accommodate four.
Hmm, they just seem like awful small lots in there. So that was my main concern anyway. I mean, once the cars are parked, it's basically too late to do something about it. Is that correct?
No, I mean, if they're not, if they're, if they're blocking any driveways or anything, they'll be, they can be ticketed and towed.
Because I'm in that cul-de-sac where that walkway comes out and it'd be very easy to park all your cars in that cul-de-sac and then walk right to your house. I'd hate to see that happen.
Okay, so the parking is regulated by the design as well as the regulations along the, for on-street parking?
Yeah. Are these lots going to be sold separately or, we don't know? Okay, thank you.
Great, okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18252? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is official community plan text number 131, amendment bylaw 18249, the address is 19388 92nd Avenue. The applicant is Supersave Disposal Incorporated and the applicant is seeking to designate the site a temporary industrial use permit. In addition, a temporary use permit is being sought to allow the temporary storage of construction waste bins and related goods for a period not to exceed three years.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18249? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk. Ah, we have finished the public hearing. Going into committee reports, the Agricultural and Food Security Advisory Committee.
Move the minutes be received at June 5.
Second. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
And move the recommendation be adopted.
Second. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Heritage Advisory Commission?
Move the minutes be received.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move the recommendation be adopted.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Proclaimations, Nelson Mandela Day. The United Nations has declared July 18th Nelson Mandela International Day in recognition of the former South Africans' president's contribution to inspiring a culture of peace and freedom. Therefore, let it be resolved that I declare July 18th as Nelson Mandela Day and invite my fellow citizens to take action, inspire change, and embrace this true spirit of community. The next one is drowning prevention week. That basic swimming ability is a fundamental requirement towards eliminating drowning fatalities. The City of Surrey endorses the need to reduce the risk of drowning within our province and communities. Therefore, let it be resolved that I declare June 19th to 27th as drowning prevention week in the City of Surrey and urge all citizens to take lifeguard, to take lifeguards when engaging in water recreation activities. Okay, moving into corporate reports, R 119.
Move the recommendation on the non-atrial patching program?
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R 120.
Move the recommendation on the water main installations at various locations?
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R 121.
Move the recommendation of road and water main works at 70th and 122nd.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R 122.
Gosh, I hope we don't need these, but move the recommendation of five, purchasing of five tandem axle dump trucks with snowplows.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move the contract award for the purchase of CNG fuel light trucks.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R 124.
Move the information be received on the Surrey request app.
Second.
Fix.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R 125.
Move the recommendations Surrey City Energy District Energy System Utility appointments.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R 126.
Move the sale of surplus city properties, 6282 129th Street.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. We dealt with that one. R 128.
Move the construction award for Newton Athletic Park for the new washroom buildings.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Now, moving into bylaws, H 1.
Move third reading on one.
Second. Counselor Villeneux?
Well, on a couple of applications, and this was one of them, there was, you know, an expression of concern about the trees and the substantial trees. So I think in, we're moving the land use for these projects, but I think it's important that we do all that we can to retain the mature trees. And if there's an ability to re-jig a lot or tool into a different configuration, I think this council would appreciate that.
Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Number two.
Move third on two, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Yes, Counselor Hayne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting this, and, and I certainly am not unsympathetic to, to one of the delegations that came and spoke about, about the liquor store. However, this is moving a liquor store basically just across the street in Fraser Highway. And so there is already a liquor store in the, in the area, and I do happen to live in the area, and I've never seen any problems with that. There are problems with parking in that plaza on the north side of Fraser Highway, which I'm sure is, is one of the primary reasons for the, for the proponent wanting to move it to the south side of Fraser Highway. But, but as I said, a liquor store exists there and, and haven't seen any problems from my perspective, so I'll be supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to reiterate, the issue really is relocation, and I think that one of the things that dawned on me is that the vendor himself has been very responsible. I think that the particular vendor has worked hard in this particular community, has had very few complaints, and that's one of the reasons why I want to be able to support this particular application.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rusodi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting this application again. I, I do believe that moving this liquor store across the street and the record that not only the mall owner has had, but also the separation now from Dublin Pub around the separation for patrons there parking and then patrons for the liquor store will actually ease some of the minor things that have happened in the neighborhood, but definitely from District Four's perspective, the calls around the liquor store have been pretty much none. And for that reason, I think that for responsible owners, that this makes sense. So I think it'll add actually to both complexes by moving the liquor store away from the pub.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move final on two.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on three.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is...
Move third on four.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on five.
Move third on five.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on six.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Number six.
Sorry, that, that, we're on seven now.
Oh, sorry, number seven.
Move third on seven.
Second.
Okay. Just in terms of this one, I just want to raise a, a point here, because I think that, you know, I've seen us engineering, our engineers work and do some pretty creative things and where we've been able to save and retain some trees. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a straight line. So I just want to, want to make those comments. Counselor Villeneux?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate, I was sort of interested in the trees, where the cul-de-sac is and along that edge, and I think that really we could look at some retention there. I can understand with the entry road where it might be more difficult, but along the cul-de-sac, the entrance of the path and various things, I think it would be in the benefit of the subdivision, but also in cities as a whole if we could actually look at some retention there.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Martin?
Mayor, and I absolutely agree with you, there's some very creative ways that we could maybe make that sidewalk be very, very interesting, meandered around those trees so that we could save them. Anyways, it's something that I'd really like to, to have you look at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hetler?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, on this one, I'm just wondering, I think what precludes us from saving trees on some occasions, and perhaps it's a particularly good example here on this cul-de-sac, is that we measure the protection zone to be so significant that sometimes the tree then gets x-ed out. And perhaps we could take a closer look at whether or not we need that level of protection zone around, around the construction site, and sometimes we may ultimately lose that tree, but we could, we could try, try something different and just see if that works first, and then see where that goes. Because I think in those particularly, the two by the walkway, that's what we've done. We've measured the protection zone and said can't be saved.
Okay, thank you. I will call the question with those comments in mind. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on eights.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move final on eights.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move final on nine.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Final on 10.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move first on number 11.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move third.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move introduction.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move first.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move second.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Public hearing set for July 21st.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Number 12.
Number 12, move first.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move second.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carry.
Move third.
All in favor, contrary, carry. Clerk's report, 1A.
Move 1A. Second. Bill and Mary, is it permanent?
All in favor, contrary, carried. 1B?
Move 1B.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. 1C?
Move 1C.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. 2A?
Move 2A.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2B.
2B. All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2C.
2C. All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2D.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move temporary use permit 3A.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. 4A?
Move temporary use permit 4A.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. Now, delegation requests, Bonnie Bernstein, both of those, CIC?
Move, move the recommendation.
Okay. All in favor, contrary, carried.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor? On number 11?
Two.
Yeah, I just noticed that. Yeah, on table for, um...
Yeah, we've got, move for second and third, and that's it.
That one is, yeah, please, that one was out of order.
Apologize.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Clerk?
Out of order, sorry.
Number 11.
Number 11, yeah, number 11.
Number 11, out of order.
Out of order.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Can we just have first, second, and third?
Pardon me?
First, second, and third. We've done that?
Yeah, on, so, yeah, on table. So all we need is the first, yeah, first, second, and third readings. The introduction, public hearing is not required. So do you need a motion to that effect as per the number 11 introduction as per amended? Yes?
Move the amendment.
All in favor, contrary, carried. Okay. Number six.
Move the recommendation on parking patrol appointment.
Second. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. All righty, any notices of motion? Okay, any other business? Counselor Villeneux?
Madam Mayor, first of all, I wanted to point out that the city sent two representatives to the rail safety meeting in White Rock tonight. Because I let them, people know when we've invited us that we had a council meeting, but that we would send representatives, and thanks to the city manager, we do have an engineering department representative at the meeting, and I understand there'll be a report back to council on some of the issues that we've raised at the, and that meeting, at the next council meeting. So I appreciate that, because we have a large interest in the rail safety and other issues associated with that.
Yeah, and as well, I've sent a message to them on behalf of council, the organizing book.
The second thing is that, well, I've, I've had several meetings in the community over the last few weeks, and, and in my position of acting mayor, but also just on my own, people have called me. And one of the issues that came to my attention that I didn't think about, and that's why I appreciate it when people do sort of bring things forward, is that the area in Newton where we established a paid parking along 137th Street and that employment area, because there had been quite a demand by some of the businesses in the employment center in there to establish parking. Now, it's come to my attention that that's actually hurting businesses in that area. So what I'm going to suggest, because you often, there's often two sides to a story, is that maybe we have a new BIA in Newton, maybe as one of their first tasks. I'd just like to recommend that maybe they do a survey of the businesses in that area, because the, the parking was established, but if it's actually doing the opposite of what we intended it'd do, or the businesses thought it would do, I, I think we should look into that. So I don't know how exactly, but maybe through the city manager and to people involved with the business association in Newton. I'd be interested in seeing, just sort of a follow-up on, I think that's been in place for a couple of years, and it's effective, because I've had a ticket there. But other residents were just saying, and I was having coffee in that area, that it's actually a deterrent to business now, so we're doing everything we can to revitalize the Newton area, and I'd like to check into that. And the third thing that's come to my attention, and I think we all see it growing, the number of rape pairs organizations and VIAs, and now a new wallet community association, the number of organizations that are growing in the city. When I attended the FCM conference and a couple of the workshops, there was discussion amongst some of the larger cities as well at that conference about the effectiveness of a community outreach liaison person located directly at City Hall. So I'm just thinking it might be something that we consider, because, you know, we want to be with this new city hall here as responsive to people as we can be. And because of the number of groups in the city, which is now over half a million people, I, I think it might be wise to have someone that they can directly contact with concerns or issues so that we're all aware of it, and we could have some bi-monthly reporting back from that liaison person so that people know that their issues are being addressed and looked at, and all of us can become aware of it. Because I think that as hard as we all work, and all of us have had those connections, the city is growing, and, and we want to, to be responsive. And cities have talked about how that's a very effective position. So for me, I really appreciate that over a period of time, we could have a bit of research done on that, and, and the possibility of the establishment, because I know we'll be going into budget discussions early fall, and I'd like to see how we might fit that into the current budget. Because I know it's very effective having our sustainability manager, who manages the sustainability charter, our crime reduction manager. And so I just want to make sure that we have not a community manager, but an association with a point person so that we are fully aware of issues that they, they may have. So I'd just like to make a recommendation.
Are you putting that motion forward?
I'd like to put that motion forward.
Second. Second there? Okay, to the motion? Okay, are you finished there?
Yes.
I'll let you wrap up. Okay. Counselor Rusodi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Villeneux, for adding voice. This is an issue that, as far back as from when I've been elected, through the Association of Sustainable Communities, that did come forward as a recommendation. And what we did really well in terms of our document on the principles of consultation and engagement that were adopted by council was the first phase. And then with the community associations, we've moved forward to not only do the work after the town hall meetings, but in building the community summit. And out of those, all of those dialogues, the recommendation has always been to have a person responsible to liaise with community associations, just as the recommendation of having council packages available to individuals prior to Monday meetings, and the consultation that was done when we revamped our website to provide space to associations and promote their events. That's been an ongoing dialogue for a number of years, so I'm really happy to see you add voice to that request. It is something that the old city manager actually had done quite a bit of work on, and I know that a job description was actually even developed through Parks and Recreation and through staff under Lori Bowie's department. David Sadler does a lot of that work now, and he's doing a lot of the work on the buildup to next year's community summit through the Community Connections programs that have been taking place in all of the neighborhoods. So I'm really happy to hear that we actually have a formal motion today and really speak wholeheartedly, not only in favor, but do want to give credit to the presentations that are made every year by the Association of Sustainable Communities to have that representative. Because a city of our size actually, one position is just to start, lots of cities have community development departments. I know that sounds really large, but it's usually more than one person, and the focus in terms of integration on community needs through all of the departments and the coordination, I think, is really valuable. So thank you for that.
All right. Madam Mayor? Go ahead.
I, I just want to acknowledge that the city has done a lot of work in this area, as Counselor Rusodi has pointed out. You know, I appreciate the work that counselors have done and staff has done, but I, I do think that we are ready to take the next step, and I've talked to a number of my colleagues who feel the same way. And I just, I had a few issues that were brought up during my discussions, and I just wasn't aware of them. So I just think it might be, not because I'm not interested, but it, because it's hard for people to make everyone aware about every single issue. Not that we'll address all of those, but it made me realize definitely that that next